It's all because of you. It's all because of your love. That I'm still standing. I couldn't miss my way. I could have fallen on the wayside. But you were always there to help me. I couldn't miss my way. I could have fallen on the wayside. But you always helped me. Lord, I'm amazed by how you showed me mercy. She make more. Thank you for your mercy. Lord, I'm amazed by how you showed me mercy. She make more. Thank you for your mercy.
Greetings to you all in the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Uh, we are back again, we are back again. Um, so please let's just share the live, double tap the screen as hard as you can, as many times as you can. Let's share the live and invite a friend or two to come and be with us. As we begin with our Bible study today, we're gonna begin at eight o'clock. Let's just keep on bringing the Holy Spirit and sharing to uh as many people as we can. Hello Zeddieh, how are you? I've missed you guys so much, I'm back now. Let's just double tap the screen, share the live, invite a friend or two, amen.
Thank you for your mercy. Lord, I'm amazed by how you showed me mercy. Oh, I'm amazed. She make it more. Thank you for your mercy.
How many of you wanna thank the Lord with me for the mercy and the love that he has given us? It's all because of you. It's all because of your love. It's all because of his love and grace that we are still standing here today. It's all because of his love and mercy that we are able to see each other today.
It's all because of your love. That I'm still standing.
Listen to this one, it says.
I couldn't miss my way. I could have fallen on the wayside. But you were always there.
He's always there to help me. I could have missed my way, I could have died in December, I could have died in January, but he still has me in his palm of his hand. He's a God that never lives, he's a God that never forsakes, he's a God that keeps us safe. Oh, I'm amazed, Lord. I'm amazed by the love that he has given me. I'm grateful for the love that he's always showing me. I'm amazed by the grace that he's showing over my family. I'm amazed by the grace that he's showing over my work. I'm amazed by the grace that he's showing over my studies. I am grateful for the mercy that is showing on my heart.
Lord, I'm amazed by how you showed me mercy. She make it more. Thank you for your mercy.
Oh yes! He is the Alpha and the Omega. He is the beginning and the end. He is the A and the Z and everything in between.
Thank you for your mercy.
Oh Father, we give you praise, Father, we invite you in our praise. We invite you in our place in this time. As we have decided to join in, oh Jesus, in this life to share the knowledge about your word, oh Jesus, may you be with us. Father, we are grateful for your mercy, we are grateful for your love. Father, we are grateful for the life that you have given us. Because we would have fallen down on the wayside, we would have died on the wayside, we would have died, oh Jesus, but Lord, your hand, Lord, your mercy has been upon our lives. Father, we thank you for this love. We don't deserve this kind of love that you keep on giving us. For we seen each and every day, we don't do good each and every day, but your love is sufficient for us, your mercy is enough for us. Lord, we are thankful, Lord, we are thankful, Lord, we exalt you, Lord, we lift you higher. We say you are the Alpha, we say you are the Omega. We install on this peto. Saying below Z, Father, we thank you, even in this time, oh Lord, as we are about to have your word. Lord, we pray for wisdom, Lord, we pray for knowledge, Lord, we pray that may you open our minds, let us listen to your word, and let us not just listen to it, but let us do it in our daily life. For you say that men should not leave by breath alone, but also by the word and by you. Lord, we are ready, oh Jesus, to hear what you have in store us. We are grateful for your love. We are grateful for your mercy. We are thankful of your love. We are thankful of your goodness. We are thankful, oh Jesus. Father, we thank you for this kind of meeting today. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have been here. Oh Father, we thank you. Oh Lord, we give you praise, oh Lord, we give you honor. You are the Yeshua, you are the Messiah, you are the Alpha, you are the Omega, you are Jehovah Rapha, you are Jehovah Nisi, you are the one who was, the next, the next to come. You are the Lord of lords. The Lord of lords. We thank you, Jesus. Lord, we pray that may you be in our midst right now. Father, we wanna feel your presence as we are sitting in front of our screens at home. Father, we pray that each and everyone that joins this life, may they receive what they've been looking for. May this life change their lives in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. Oh, it's only you, Jesus. It's only you, Jesus. It's only you, Jesus. Oh Jesus. Oh, it's your mercy, Lord. It's all your mercy. Thank you for your mercy. Thank you for your mercy. We would never come near your presence. We would never, we would never meet up to your standard. But for your mercy. Oh, thank you, Holy Spirit. It is mercy, it is mercy, it is mercy. Oh, we thank you, Holy Spirit. Oh, we thank you, Holy Spirit. In the name of Jesus, we have prayed, amen. Greetings to you all in the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Ah, I've missed you guys so much, I've missed you guys so much. Um, I'm not gonna take much of your time today since many of you do not know that today we're gonna be having a Bible study. So I believe that um people will join us on the way. But if, even if we are two or three, the Lord says, "I will be with you." Because it's not about the number of people who join, but it's about the number of people who join and receive grace. It's about the number of people who join and receive the Christ that we are preaching about. It's not about the likes, it's not about the followers, it's not about the number of people who have attended, but it's about the mercy that people receive once they come into these lives. It's not about everything that we see here, but it's about the grace and the love that we get after this love, after this life from God, amen. Um, oh hello Amanda, I missed you guys so much, I missed you guys so much, I'm back now, I'm back now. Um, at home I had a lot of network problems, but now that I'm back at school, I don't think there's gonna be any network problems, hopefully. Okay, um, as I said, I do not wanna take much of your time. I want us to go to the book of Luke, chapter number eight. Let's just turn to our Bibles in the book of Luke, chapter number eight, verse number twenty-two to verse number twenty-six. Uh, those that are here, can you just jot it down in the comment section so that people who come can look at it on the comment section? We are in the book of Luke, chapter number eight, verse number twenty-two. Book of Luke, chapter number eight, verse number twenty-two to verse number twenty-six. Amen. It reads as follows. It says, the topic says, "Jesus calms the storm." Jesus calms the storm. Those who have just recently joined, we are in the book of Luke, chapter number eight, verse number twenty-two to verse number twenty-six. It says, "Jesus calms the storm." Now, verse number twenty-two says, "One day Jesus said to his disciples, 'Let us go over the other side of the lake.' So they got into their boat and set out." It says in verse number twenty-three, "As they sailed, he fell asleep. A squall came down on the lake so that the boat was being swamped, and they were in great danger." I wanted to, I want us to highlight verse number twenty-three. It says, "And as they sailed, he fell asleep." Meaning that as they were walking, Jesus fell asleep. As they were going to the place that they were going to, Jesus fell asleep. Then now it says, "A squall came down on the lake so that the boat was being swamped." And it says, "They were in great danger." Verse twenty-four, "Their disciples went and woke Jesus up, saying, 'Master, master, we are going to drown.' He got up and he rebuked the wind and the raging waters. The storm subsided, and all was calm." And then he says in verse number twenty-five, "Where is your faith, child of God? Where is your faith?" Jesus asked his disciples. "Where is your faith?" In fear and amazement, they asked one another and said, "Who is this person? He commands even the winds and the water, and they obey him." Father, we thank you for the reading of your word, may you speak to us through the Holy Spirit in the name of Jesus, amen. I'm finding some few things that I want us to highlight here. Number one, these people were on a boat going to a certain place, doing the work of God. And it says, "On their way to the place that they were sent to go to, Jesus fell asleep." Which means that these people were tired. As they were sailing their way to the final destination, Jesus fell asleep. The Bible only speaks about Jesus, that Jesus fell asleep, which means that all of them were tired. So now, once Jesus fell asleep, I'm sure even some of them due to the tiredness, some of them also fell asleep. And then the word of God says, "As some of them were asleep, there was a wind, there was a, uh, it says, the Bible says, "There was a soul," they call it like that, "that swamped them." There was a squall that swamped them, it's a wind, it's a storm. It swamped the boat to a point that they were going to die. And it says in verse number twenty-three, "They were in great danger." According to who? According to the standards of the world. They were in great danger. They were in great danger. Then it says in verse number twenty-three, it's verse number twenty-four, "They woke Jesus up and said, 'Master, master, we are going to drown.'" Here's what I like about Jesus, he didn't even wake up and, 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 and looked at the storm and, and, and was like, "Oh my God, what am I gonna do?" But he said, after he woke up, he immediately stood up and stopped the storm. And the word of God says, "After Jesus woke up and he stopped the storm, he looked back to his disciples and he said, 'Where is your faith? Where is your faith?'" Many of you have went through situations in your life, and you ran to different people and said, "Oh guys, I am falling in depression. Oh guys, my child is sick. Oh guys, this and this is happening in my life. Oh guys, the vicinity has not accepted me." Then Jesus comes and he says, "Where is your faith? Where is your faith?" This is a question that we need to ask ourselves. Many a times when we face situations, we lose our faith in God. I mean, yes, you are a believer, yes, you go to church every day. But one sad truth about Christians is that they have faith when things are going good in their lives. They have faith when there's nothing wrong going in their lives. They have faith when they have to advise other people. They have faith when there's no situation that, that makes them to be tremble, that's when they have faith. What about when you have that situation? What about when that friend of yours or that family member of yours passes on? What about when the time where your mother is sick on her dying bed, where is your faith? The word of God says that as they were sailing, Jesus fell asleep, and there was a great storm that came, that came to the boat, and it said, "They were in great danger." They woke Jesus up and then they say, "Jesus, we are going to die, there's a storm that's on us." And Jesus woke up and he stopped the storm. And then he said, "Where is your faith?" One other thing that I'm finding about these disciples is that they didn't, they did not know the person that they were going with. It says in verse number twenty-five, "Where is your faith?" he asked his disciples. In fear and amazement, they asked one another, "Who is this? He commands even the winds and the water, and they obey him. Who is this person?" It means that some of us are walking with Jesus that we do not know the capabilities that he can do. Some of us are walking with a God that we do not know. Some of us are walking with a God that we believe that he can do some certain things, but there's some certain things that he can't do. Who is the God that you are working with? It says in verse number twenty-five, these people asked, "Who is this?" It means that all along, they did not know the person they were going with. Yes, they knew that he was the Messiah, yes, they knew that he performed miracles, yes, they knew that he did all these wonderful things, but they did not know his capabilities. Yes, I go to church, yes, I speak in tongues, yes, I preach, yes, I do all of these kind of things for God, but I do not know the God that I am working with. If I am able to say in some certain situations, it means I do not know the God that I am going with. If I am still able to go through seasons and say, "Oh my God, what am I gonna do? Oh my God, who can help me? Oh my God, am I gonna die? Oh my God, I'm not gonna get the job?" It means I do not know the God that I am working with. Know the God that you are working with. We always sing and say, "He's the Alpha and the Omega." We always sing that he's the, that the beginning of age. We always sing and say that he's the ancient of days. We always sing and say, "He's the rock of my salvation." We always speak and say, "He's the one who was, is and is to come." But when we face situations, where is that God? Because when you face situations, we are looking for the same enthusiasm you had when you were praising him in good times. When you are facing situations, we are still looking for the same energy that you had when you were still in good times. I wanna speak briefly about faith, Masalwani. The word of God says, "There was a time where Jesus came to a wedding, and it says, "They were out of wine, but they had jars full of water." Now everyone there were like, "Oh my God, where are we gonna get this water? Where are we gonna get this wine?" Because all we have here is water. There's one woman that I like, her name is Mary. She had faith in Jesus. She went to Jesus and he said, "My son, there's no wine in this place." Mary knew that Jesus did not have the money to buy the wine. Mary knew that Jesus did not have the wine to bring, but he, she also had faith in him. She knew the person that was in that place. She knew that I'm not just speaking to any person, but I am speaking to the Son of God. I'm not just speaking to any person, but I am, I am speaking to one of the people in the Trinity of God, which is the God, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. I am not just speaking to anyone, but I am speaking to God, the Son. And he said, "Jesus, we are out of wine." Mary didn't know where she was gonna get the wine. Mary didn't know where the wine was gonna come from after she tells Jesus. But one thing about her is that she had faith. And here's one thing that I like about Jesus, he said, "Fetch all the jars and fill them with water." And he said, "Step aside." As they stepped aside, he prayed on the water, and the water turned into wine. What am I going to say unto you, child of God? I wanna say to you that there's always wine in every water. There's always healing in every sickness. There's always jobs in every unemployment. All you have to do is to have faith in this God. I'm about to tell you, child of God, that in every water that you see, there's always wine. Because of the faith that you have. You are saying to me, "You are sick because of this." And I'm saying to you, "There's healing in the name of Jesus." You are coming to me and you are saying you don't have a job. And I'm saying to you, "There's job in the name of Jesus." You are coming to you and you are saying you don't have wine. And I'm telling you, "There's wine in the name of Jesus because of the faith that I have." The word of God says, "Jesus asked his disciples, 'Where is your faith?'" And one thing about the disciples is that they didn't know the Jesus that they were working with. One thing about this, this disciples is that they didn't know the type of person that they were going with. There's a verse that we all laugh, that says, "Greater is he who is inside of us than the one on earth." Let me tell you something, child of God. As these people who are on the boat, they forgot that greater is he who is on the boat than the one on the earth. I know they were probably scared, I know they thought nothing was gonna go good, but because there was someone on the boat that was not like anyone else, he was able to stop the storm. Listen to me, child of God, I do not know what you are going through. I do not know what situation you are going through. But because of the God that is inside of you, because of the person that you are going with, you shall be able to move mountains, you shall be able to call jobs, you shall be able to heal the sick, you shall be able to do whatever in his name because of your faith. Thing is that these disciples, they didn't know the type of person they were going with. That is why in verse number twenty-five, after Jesus stopped the storm, he said, "My disciples, where is your faith? Where is your faith? Yes, I can see your mother has died. Yes, I can see your provider has passed on. But Jesus has made me to come and tell you and ask you this question, that where is your faith, faith, child of God? In good times, we always sing and say, "Greater is he who is within us than the one on earth." Why can't you say those same words when you are in deep situations? Many of us were walking with a God that we do not know. Many of us were walking with a Savior that we do not know. Yes, you pray, yes, you trust in him sometimes, but you do not know what he's capable of. And this is why every time you have a challenge or have a situation, you run to your friends, you run to your family members, you run to the nearest people who can help you. Because he's not a priority to you. I like the verse that I always say every day, "Many are cold but few are chosen." It comes back. I know many probably don't even understand what that word is about, that says, "Many are cold but few are chosen." Let me tell you something. It means that those who are chosen are the ones who were resilient even in problems that they faced. It means that the chosen ones are the ones that are gonna see heaven. The chosen ones are the ones that when they saw a situation, they said, "No, I know the God that I'm working with." Listen to me, child of God. I know that NSFAS of yours, it has rejected you. I know the university has not accepted you. I know the bazaar that you applied for has not yet responded. I know the job that you went for an interview for has not yet responded, but let me tell you something. Those who are faith in God, those who believe in God, those who trust in God shall renew their life, shall renew their strength. Here's one thing that I realized as I was preparing for this sermon is that having faith in God is kind of like a weird thing. You know why? Because when you have faith in God, it enables you to see the ending. Meanwhile, you are still in the middle. Let me say that again for those who just joined in. When you have faith in God, it enables you to see the ending. And it makes you to forget that you are still in the process of getting to the ending. What am I saying? You see, when Jesus asked his disciples and said, "Where is your faith?" He wanted them to go to, when they saw the storm coming, to say, "Lord, we are not seeing the storm that we are going through, but we are already seeing ourselves getting to the end part of where we are going." What am I saying to you? I know right now you don't have the job. I know right now you don't have the money. But I want you to not picture the current situation. I want you to picture the ending. Why? Because the word of God says that we aren't of the world. So every situation that is found on the world is not for ours to pay. Our purpose is to look at the ending. Our thing is to look at the goal. Our thing is to have trust in God. Our thing is to have faith in God. Oh Lord, I know things are not going good right now. Oh Lord, I know I don't have money right now. Oh Lord, I know I don't have the job right now. Oh Lord, I know my NSFAS has rejected me. Oh Lord, I know the school has rejected me, but I have faith in you. The book of Mekka, chapter number seven, verse seven, says, "I will wait, as for me, I will wait." It means, even if it takes two years, even if it takes five years, I will wait for my God. It says in the book of Proverbs, chapter number three, verse five, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and lean not to your own understanding." and lean not to your own understanding." It means, "Even if people are telling me in the book of Psalms, though I walk in the valley of shadow, I shall not fear no evil, because I know the God that I am going with." Many a times, we do not know the God that we are going with. That is why in situations, we tend to tend to our friends. We tend to tend to our families. We tend to tend to our extended whatever. But worse, here's what I wanna tell you, is that those who trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not to their understanding, the Lord will make provision for them. He asked, and I asked again, "Where is your faith?" One of my sisters who recently just joined once said a quote that was powerful. What she said? She said to us here on TikTok, "There's always wine in every water. There's always healing in every sickness." Ah, not that I'm just not seeing the sickness Greater is he who is living inside of me than the one who's on earth. Listen to this. The book of Luke, as I was preaching about it, chapter number eight, verse 22, we all know the scripture. Those who recently just joined. Jesus calmed the storm. When Jesus was sleeping and then there was a storm that came, I explained it to those who were here recently. And then it says in verse number 15, "Where is your faith?" He asked his disciples. In fear and amazement, they asked them one another, "Who is this?" He commands even the winds and the water to stop. They obey him. These people did not know the person who was in the boat. Now where you are living, child of God, you are praying, you are fasting, but you do not know the God that you are worshiping. You do not know that the God you are worshiping can turn the water into wine. You do not know that the God that you are worshiping can turn a pointless situation into something that is worth full. I've got two other revelations that I wanna say, then I go. Verse number 23, it says, "As they sailed, he fell asleep." I wanna speak about this. It says, "As they sailed." It means that when Jesus was awake, when all of them were awake, everything was going smooth. But once they were tired, it says, "Jesus slept and some of them slept. And as they were sleepy," that is where the storm came. What do I wanna say to you, child of God? It means that every time you sleep, the devil is able to come into your life. Every time you stop praying, the devil is able to come into your life. Every time you stop believing in God, the devil is able to come in. Every time you are worried and you don't go to God, the devil is able to come in. Every time you are lost and you do not know what's going on, the devil is able to come in, child of God. One day, Jesus came back to his disciples and he said, "Why are you guys sleeping?" He came back and he found all of his disciples sleeping and he asked, "Why are you guys sleeping? When you are sleeping spiritually, the power of God departs from you. When you are sleeping spiritually, the grace of God moves from you. When you are sleeping spiritually, you are opening doors for the devil." And then we find people saying, "God is not there." Check your altar, is it still burning? Check your faith, do you still have it? Check your God, is he still in you? Because the word of God says, "After Jesus slept and all of them slept, that is when the storm came." It means that every time we lack in prayer, every time we lack in fasting, every time we lack a church, the devil is able to come in. Because he realized that the fire is no longer there. The word of God says, but the moment they began to sleep, that's where the devil came in. You see, as I'm about to close this presentation, the boat and the water. The boat is the church and the water is the world. Listen, I'm cooking. The boat had Jesus inside of it. The water is the world. So if us in the boat, we do not realize the person that we are working with, it means the water can be able to come into our lives. Hmm, let me cook again. It means that if we do not understand the God that we are sailing with, the water is able to take us out. But the minute we understand we know the God that we are working with. He says, "Trust in me with all thine heart and lean not to your own understanding. Lean not to your own understanding." Yes, the situation is not going. Yes, this and this is not happening. But where is your faith? The one that you always brag about and say, "Greater is he who is inside of me than the one on earth." Gimbonile hamba nami. Nyasa nganga ngsiye manje. Gimbonile shula name gdimeni. Anga gaza ngala manje. Gimbonile ngthwala. Unyagusa kala. Umnyaga twenty twenty four. Wasi wapela. Anga gaza ngala sala. Gimbonile sin gisuma wami. Emnyagenka two thousand and ban bani. Anga gaza ngala sala. Gimbonile ngsi se skolweni. Anga gaza ngala sala. Tembo kulu kulu. Tembo kulu kulu. Trust in the Lord. Trust in the Lord. But where is your faith? Or be campen gwenzela, we lose our faith. But those who run the basukarabaya, who stay and lean in him, he carries them. We give you all the all the glory. Ashalaba kayanda rabah. We worship you alone. Enamukayandera bah. You are worth. Where is your faith? You are worth. You are worthy to be praised, Lord. What kind of mercy is this? We give you all all the hela maya. All the glory. Esha karabasa ya. Eh, we worship. Hela makayantera bahsaya. Ufanelu tumo. Ufanelu paga ngiswa. The glory and the honor belongs to you. Hela mandorosi abaya. Trust in the Lord. Are you atwalana Bazaloni? Jokes aside, conferences aside, we are atwalana lungulu kulu. Na lunda bah. We are atwalana lungulu kulu. Sete simos beta. Abati thulani nina. Uchehovu sa gunilue la. Kuti bete kaya. Ati thulani nina. Uchehovu sanue la. Hola manderosi alla. Thulani nina. Uchehovu sa gunilue la. Let God fight for you. Let God fight for you. I know you have a sister that you can run to. I know you have a brother that you can run to. But let God. It's in the book of Mica, chapter number seven, verse seven. "As for me, I will wait. I will wait. I know I have," because in Yama seven, there are S A P C. "I know I have a sister of minus seven, there are N S F A S. God, let me trust in you, Lord." The word of God in the book of Mica, chapter number seven, verse eight, it says, "My enemies do not get happy, for I am suffering for a while." My enemies do not be happy, for I am still going through a different season. The Lord will come for me. I know that my thing is not working out. But in gitembele gue. Oh, wetembe sele. My God will hear me. The book of Habakkuk states, "When the time is right, I, the Lord, will make it happen." Many a times, we want the time to happen at our own time. Because he's able. We give you all all the all the dog on a manos. Ah, we worship. We worship him because he is able. We worship him because yamasi la yes keep a corner. Asamkondelingo ambah. Ke pasasimkonda no ma. Asimkondelingo bes busisile. Ke pasimkonda no misimo snavome. Simkonda no mabantu bestuganga ay. Simkonda no mabantu bestfiselo gobi. Goba yenah umile zolo. Na namsha napaga aten. Ages tanda zen. Father, we give you praise. There's none like you, Jesus. We have not met a God like you. We have not met a Savior like you. Ke pa mangxale gue. Mangxale gue. For those who wait upon the Lord, he shall renew. he shall renew their strength. Kulunkula manje tapelile. A manje tu asenza sngasakonuklinda. Ke pa namshanjesi zolan da mancha. Asise lango mingi. Asise lango xokomplena. Ke pa sisoti kulu kulu sisazolinda. Until guvuma masolo. We thank you for your wonderful session that we just had. May you bless your children that are listening to my voice right now. Those that their faith has fallen down, may you raise their faith again. Those that have went underway and their fire stopped burning, may you keep their fire burning and their altars on fire every day. Lord, we are praying, we are trusting in you. In the name of our Lord and precious Jesus. Amen. Until we meet again. Amen. We are trusting in the Lord. We are trusting in God. He is able. He is able to do it. He is able to conquer every situation. Be still and know that that he is your God. There's a song that I love that says, be still and know that I am God. Be still and know that I am God. Be still and know. Know the God that you are walking with. Don't only know him by his works. Don't only know him by the things that he's done, but know God for who he is. Know God for who he is. Know God for who he is. Have faith. Stay in faith. Stay in prayer. Utsabelela gashi. Uibugi linda bayako. Usopendula. Uibugi linda bayako. Usopendula. 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 I'd like to take this opportunity and thank it in every one of you who joined the live today. Let us keep on trusting in God. Let us keep on praying to God. As the book of Mica says, those who wait upon the Lord, I mean, the book of Mica says, as for me, I will wait. Wait for him. Wait, I know, child of God. It's hard. But wait. Aba boku ka ba talakaya bishabelela. Batila bahamba ngalenjela basosebe tuka. Aba hamba glenjela abasosebe tuka. Goba bayamas dutika bahamba na. Trust in your God. Even in the year of twenty twenty five, trust in your God. Even in the month of February, trust in your God. Do not allow things that are done in February to move you away from your altar. The word of God says, the moment they slept, that is when the devil came in. The moment they were tired and they slept, that's when the devil came in. Do not allow the month of February, do not allow the month of December to make you to be tired. Do not allow this month to move you from your position. Trust in him. Stay in him. Obey him. And he shall make a way for you. I love you guys so much and I thank you for joining today's live. I'm gonna see you guys again. Um, let me check. Today it's a Tuesday, I believe it's a Tuesday today. We are going to meet on Thursday at seven o'clock, Thursday, seven o'clock. We are coming to have a session again. Oh, Lord, you just arrived. Uh, don't worry, we are coming back uh, on Thursday, eight o'clock at night, yes, South African time, eight o'clock. Do join us. We are a family of Jesus to the world, Holy Ghost Experience. My name is Sean Manjazi and I love you guys so much. Please do come and meet us. Please do follow us on our social media pages. We have a YouTube channel where this live is gonna be there. So I'm gonna download it as it is and I'm gonna post it there. So since Lordy, don't worry, you're gonna get it on our YouTube channel on Jesus to the World, Holy Ghost Experience. You'll find the whole live and all the other lives that we have had in the past. Make sure that you put a timer, you bring your Bible, you bring your pen, you make sure you are ready. Thursday, eight P M, we are coming to pray. We are coming to share the word. We are coming to speak about the word of God because it only is the way, the truth and the life. Thank you so much. I love you guys so much. Have a wonderful night. Amen and amen. Shalom.